All right, let's get to it.
I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. It is now 7:14. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Alderman Hayes.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Here.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Mayor Taylor.
Present.
You have a quorum, ma'am.
Thank you. This evening, we're going to have the invocation by Pastor Elise Campos, the light of the world church, and then we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor? Oh, okay, sorry.
Mayor Taylor and Alderman. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for the opportunity that has been given to us this evening. We understand the responsibility that this entails. Therefore, we ask humbly that your wisdom and your grace be our guide and that your love be the compass in every decision we make here this evening. We ask to bless our community and let your light shine on every one of our leaders, that they be blessed jointly with their families with health, wisdom, and humility. We believe that they have been entrusted with a great burden by your will and desire. So let it be your hand that guides our mayor, Alderman, city officials, and community leaders that this city may become a beacon of hope, an example to many, and a source of prosperity. That your purpose for mankind on his journey on earth may be evident to all those who seek a better tomorrow. We ask you to bless our city, the great state of Illinois, and this, United States of America. We understand our weakness may be many, but we also understand that your love is infinite and everlasting. We ask all these things. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Campos. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's comments. First, I want to welcome everyone to the Waukegan City Council meeting. Whether you're in attendance here or you're watching from home, we're pleased that you're joining our city council meetings. These meetings are where people's business is conducted, and we are always glad to have residents involved in the community. Some brief announcements. Number one, again, I want to remind before we go to audience time, the audience decorum, that we will be polite. We will not talk about residents. We will not swear, and we will be good citizens of the city of Waukegan. Some brief announcements. COVID-19 testing and the vaccination site at 102 West Water Street will return to being a testing site only on Sunday, October 10. COVID vaccinations will be available at the Lake County Health Department at 3010 Grand Avenue, Monday through Friday, from 9:00 to 4:00 p.m. Again, you will only be able to do the testing at Water Street. I'm very pleased to let you know that the COVID numbers are coming down, but we are not out of the pandemic. So if you haven't gotten your vaccine, please do that as soon as possible and continue to wear your face masks and keep social distance. The city of Waukegan, along with Senator Adrian Johnson, Representative Rita Mayfield, and the Waukegan Township Supervisor Mark Jones, and the Lake County Sheriff John Idleberg, are hosting a collection event Saturday, October 9, from 8:30 to 11:30 a.m. in the Lake County Sheriff's parking lot at 25 South Martin Luther King Avenue. This event will allow you to get rid of unwanted electronics, medications, and there will also be paper shredding available at the event. Again, this is really important, that this is a chance for you to get rid of those papers that you've been saving. Let's get those out. It is 8:30 to 11:30. Waukegan Art Walk is on Saturday, October 16. This is the 11th Zombie Walk with activities for residents of all ages, and it'll conclude Waukegan's first comic book convention walk-on at the Ray Bradbury Experience Museum. Fans will be at both ends of downtown, and there will be shows at the Genesee Theater and Three Brothers Theater. I'm looking forward to everyone coming out. This is a great event. It's fun. Just have a good time. Speaking of Halloween, our colleagues with the Waukegan Park District are here this evening to talk about Halloween events being held this month. We're always so proud of our Waukegan Park District. You guys do a fantastic job, so we're looking forward to your holiday events. I know it's hard to believe, but we're already starting to look at events for 2022. For those of you who have annual events and submit special permits, we are now saying we are in the process of revamping our permit process, so you will be able to submit your applications starting on January 10, 2022, at 12:01 a.m. The 36th Annual Lunch with the Mayor is at the Glen Flora Country Club on Monday, October 25. This special event allows me to give a State of the City address, share my vision for the future, and field questions from citizens, businesses, and other important stakeholders in the city. Tickets are available through Waukegan Main Street. Their web address is waukeganmainstreet.org. I've attended many of these lunches before as an Alderman and as a resident, so I'm particularly excited to now do it as your mayor. There are two ward meetings coming up. On October 11 at 6:00 p.m., the second and fourth ward are having a joint meeting over at Belvedere Park, correct?
Belvedere, Lexington.
On 10/14 at 6:30 to 8:30, the sixth ward is having a Zoom meeting. So you can get in contact with Alderman Turner for that information. On Sunday, October 3 until Saturday, October 9, is Fire Prevention Week. And is Chief Paiser here? Why don't you come up and talk about that? I'm going to put you on the spot.
Mayor, and Alderman, and residents, thank you for allowing me to speak. This year's fire prevention theme is dubbed "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety." We have teamed up with the Illinois Fire Safety Alliance to provide free smoke detectors to homes throughout the city of Waukegan. Anytime a homeowner requests a smoke detector, we come out and do an assessment of the home and install the appropriate number of smoke detectors needed. This program is grant-funded and is ongoing throughout the year. The Illinois Fire Safety Alliance provides a continuous number of smoke detectors to the Waukegan Fire Department as long as we install them. All smoke detectors installed are the 10-year sealed battery type. Keeping working smoke alarms in the homes is critical to reducing injuries and deaths as a result of fires. If you or someone you know needs a smoke detector, please call us at 847-249-5410. Again, 847-249-5410, or you can check out our website as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Again, we want to teach people the difference in the sounds between a smoke detector and a fire alarm. I want to acknowledge some recent hires to the city of Waukegan. Also, I want to remind people that if you go to our website, we do have job openings. I would like the community to apply. We always like it when we can hire from within our own community, so if you haven't been there and checked out the job openings, please do so. I will have them stand up this evening. Chris Garland is our new Public Works Director.
That's Chris Seager. One of my favorite guys ever.
And his first day was today in that position. He's been here for a long time. Our Public Works Supervisor is Arturo Torres. Our Special Projects Coordinator, who will come on, I believe it's 10:18 or in that time range, will be Maria Licor, and she will be doing FOIA's and serving also as an Executive Secretary when needed. Ron Cordella is here. He is the co-director of IT. Ron has been with the city before, and welcome back. Richard Benz will be our Risk Manager, and he comes from Lake County. I also want to acknowledge some people who are retired. Our Director of Public Works, Mike Hewitt, is he still here this evening? Mike has worked hard in this city, and we will miss him tremendously, and thank you for your years of service, Mike. Also, on a sad note, we lost one of our favorite people, who many of you knew as an engineer in this city. He has been a consultant for the last several years, Mr. Frank Furlan. He passed away last week. We will actually be doing a proclamation on his behalf tonight. It is with great sadness that we will miss this man terribly. And again, I want to reach out to his family and thank him so much for everything that he's done for this community. There will be no other Frank Furlan. On that note, I think we're done with announcements, and we'll go to Madam Clerk.
Oh, good to meet you, Chris. I did miss two other things. The Exchange Center is doing their Pancake Breakfast, and it'll be a dry food dessert, the first one. And it's Saturday, October 30, from 7:00 under 1. I mean, I remember the fact that it was great.
Nice.
Okay. We do have a few resolutions and proclamations in support of our community. The first one, though, we're going to hear from the Waukegan Park District on their Gold Medal bid. We have Mr. Jay Lerner here, who's the Executive Director. Teddy Anderson, the PR Director. I think I got that wrong. But we have Jacqueline Herrera Hiram, who's the President, and we have Anton Matthews, our Commissioner. In addition, George Bridges is here, who's a Commissioner as well. And Mr. John Prue, who is going to be introduced by Jay Lerner, will go ahead and talk about the Gold Medal.
Mayor Taylor and Mr. Lerner, other city officials, and certainly the Board of Commissioners for the Park District. My name is John Prue. My day job, I work for Navy Region Mid-Atlantic, supporting morale, welfare, and recreation for sailors and family members at 14 naval installations over nine states. However, tonight, I'm proudly representing the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration, and I'm here to present the National Gold Medal Finalist Award. The National Gold Medal Award is the most coveted award in the park and recreation profession, honoring agencies and communities throughout the United States that exceed industry standards and go above and beyond to deliver public parks and recreation services. Gold Medal finalist winners measure the impact and benefit of their service through the involvement of citizens, staff, and elected members through every phase of the planning process. The Waukegan Park District demonstrated efforts in addressing conservation, equity, health, and wellness. They also demonstrated excellence in long-range planning, putting vision into action each and every year. Creating an innovative culture has become a habit for the Park District. On behalf of the Academy, we applaud and congratulate the entire Waukegan Park District team and for your outstanding accomplishments. A little bit about the Academy. The American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration is the governing organization for the Gold Medal Award Program. It consists of 125 distinguished practitioners and scholars throughout the country whose mission is to enhance parks and recreation across the country. The Academy embraces opportunity to raise the bar and enhance quality parks and recreation services at local community level, and they do so through this National Gold Medal Program. The Waukegan Park District truly represents the best of the best. Since the award's inception in 1965, Class III, population 75,000 to 150,000, there's been only 275 finalist awards. And we all know this is your fourth one since 2012, and of course, it was gold in 2013, so you're making your mark in history here. Bottom line, they have demonstrated the significant success with the design and delivery of superior services to their community. Waukegan Park District is once again in the upper echelon of over 8,000-plus park and recreation agencies across the nation. That's awesome. This National Gold Medal Finalist Award was announced and originally given out in Nashville at the NRPA Opening General Session, which is also virtually done, and that was on September 20, 2021. I'm delighted to be a part of this local acknowledgement of this prestigious award. On behalf of the American Academy for Park and Recreation Administration and our partner, Moscow Lightning, and the National Recreation and Park Association, we congratulate you on your success. And as we say in the Navy, "Bravo Zulu," meaning "well done." Thank you.
I'd also like to have a group picture, but our clerk is on the Park District.
I forgot. I forgot to say that.
And our chief of staff is also on the Park District. So can you please get a picture down in front?
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty big old medal, right?
Good thing it don't have to wear around your neck.
I guess they could. Take turn.
Again, a sincere thank you to our Park District. I think it's great that the rest of the country is finding out what we already know, that Waukegan's got the best Park District. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Next, we will be giving recognition to the Fiesta Peatres Committee, the volunteers, and all the participants. I believe there's like 50. Mrs. Crasco's going to read their names, and then we're going to do a group picture in front.
So tonight, in celebration of the National Hispanic Heritage Month, we are recognizing our diversity, multicultural group of residents of all races who gave it their time, effort, to make this year's parade the biggest and the best ever. This is just the ones that just really went above and beyond, helping out. Okay, we're going to begin. As you hear your group name or your name, please just step forward if you can. A+ United, Marilena Duñez, Jose Arias, Lupe Muñoz, Ballet Folklorico, Rogelio Chavaria, Chinelos de Morelos, Miguel Mendy, Club Social Tonetico, Jennifer Madrigal, Dinaos, Edgar Miranda, Edgar Otto Sales, El Encanto Golacina, Miguel Estrada, Flowers For You, Familia Gutierrez, Rosio Mena, Home Sweet Home, Onderaños Unidos, Mario Rodas, or raise your hand, Jesús Anguiano, Margaret and Tomas Carrasco, Familia Bueno, Tiófula López, Jesús Uribe, Luis Javier Uribe, Martín Najera, Estapan de la Sal, Charles January, North Chicago Alderman, January, Attorney John Jonum, Jose's Auto Sales, Ron Rogers, Lake County Auto Sales, Abakú Kuka, López, Juan Carlos Madujano, México Mi Pié, if you can step forward, Eradio Eduardo Celis, Radio La Mega Crew, Raúl Ventura, Radio Latino 5.0, Red Dragon Martial Arts, they had to leave unfortunately, our queen for the parade, Angelica Victoria Arullo, Lucy Rios, Waukegan High School ROTC, and their commander, Oga Sanchez Insurance, singer Miguel Fernández, Jorge Sanchez, Dario Plus Surgical Medical for the stage and sound system, Tapia Crew, Jerry Tapia, Ugo Tapia, Jonathan, Danielle Hernandez, you want to step forward? Jesús, Ugo Tapia Jr., Jesús Tapia, Meganya, Temo Fonseca, Edwin Lagunas, Toluca's Restaurant, Elizabeth Vaca, Emmanuel Vázquez, and the Familia Vázquez over there on the end. Liz, okay, Liz Vázquez, okay. Armando Méndez from Win Win Restaurant, Abel y Obel, Zavala. And the winner this year for the most popular parade entry was Illinois State Secretary of State Jesse White, and we have a special present for him. Comes out. There he is!
Do you all have your next parade?
His crew performed six times along the parade road in the heat. I don't know how you did it, but it was an honor to have your crew. The Jesse White tumblers, they rocked. We loved them.
Thank you very much, Mr. Colossal. And as I've indicated, I'm Jesse White. For the past 23 years, I've had the great pleasure of serving as Secretary of State. However, 63 years is called to follow the Jesse White tumbling team. I believe that when you come to this world, you come to something you can back, which you must do something good for someone every day. I also believe that there's a great hope for the world out there. If we are to live in peace and harmony within that system, then we have to figure out a way to love our fellow man and woman and never to sacrifice one before the race screen is colored. I teach my young people to always look up and aim high and wait that. I want them to look down as the tatties shoot.
Come on, man.
Of course, I also believe too that when you come to this world, you give it back. I've had the great pleasure of being a coach and founder, as I said before, with this group of young people. Someone in college, someone in high school, and someone in elementary school. I teach them about love. I teach them about putting something between eight ears. Every other scout will tell them knowledge, and I will carry them far. In closing, I want to thank this wonderful organization, which gave me a caring spirit and for presenting the Jesse White tumbling team to this wonderful sabreto. I happen to have a couple in my office, but that's okay. Thank you for, we'll just add this one to the rest. But again, by chance, we have this parade next year. I hope that you will consider us. We do 1,500 shows a year. We have 17, 170 young people on the team. We have eight units, and my mission is to help these young people to realize their dreams, love their fellow man and woman, do all they can to put something in here every day on the scout. We'll tell them our knowledge, and I will carry them far. And overall, we want to be leafless, smokeless, and pipeless wherever we're going to practice pharmacy, since they were in the word code. To the mayor, thank you very much for running a wonderful city. And the members of the city council, thank you for just your duties and the manner in which all of us people act. Now with that, hasta la vista.
White, don't leave us yet. Mr. White, we have a...
I also serve in the military, and that's why I like to preach and encourage the general operation, every kind of jobs I work for. National Guard, Reservists, every group. So I taught school for 33 years. I've done so much I even started talking about it. But Charles, as they were saying, my neighbor, you're the man.
You're the man.
And to your lovely bride, you chose well. Mister, sir, we have to say, "Oh, brother."
Mr. White, we have a special award for you. It's called our Waukegan Proud Award, and it couldn't go to somebody who exemplifies this more than you. It's in recognition for your selfless service to the people of Illinois and as a role model for integrity, accountability, and professionalism. Thank you so much. Again, thank you to all of the volunteers who helped with the parade. This is a big undertaking, and it's a community support, so thank you so much to each and every one of you. Next, we will... Before we go on to the next one, I forgot to mention our new city engineer. Jesús Al...
Alquir... Rena?
Alcrusida. I'm going to say it wrong, and I know it. Please come. Thank you, Jesús. Okay, on to... Okay, on to the next proclamation. As many of you may know, October is Domestic Violence Month, so we have a safe place here to be recognized for domestic violence. Madam Clerk, would you read the proclamation?
Proclamation, October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, whereas domestic violence is a pattern of control in a relationship where one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over another. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects all citizens and crosses economic, racial, gender, and societal barriers. And whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in Waukegan, throughout the United States and the world, and it takes courage for a survivor to seek help. And whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control, nearly one in four women and one in seven men will be a victim of domestic abuse during their lifetime. And whereas, too often, children who grow up in violent homes have a lifetime of repercussions from the physical and emotional trauma of witnessing or experiencing domestic violence. And whereas, domestic violence costs billions of dollars a year in medical expenses and burial costs, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, and sick leave. And whereas, Waukegan supports organizations such as a Safe Place, which is the sole provider of services exclusively addressing domestic violence in Lake County, is committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and is sending a clear message that domestic violence will not be tolerated. And whereas, Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an opportunity to learn more about preventing domestic violence, how to recognize the subtle signs of domestic abuse and violence, and to show support for victims and survivors. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Ann B. Taylor and the members of the city council do hereby proclaim October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month and encourage our community to promote awareness and prevention of domestic violence through intervention, education, and advocacy, adopted this fourth day of October 2021. Ms. Damaris Lata?
I just want to take a quick second to thank Mayor Taylor and the council here in front of us today. Domestic violence impacts one out of every three women and one out of seven men so, in our lifetime. So, all of us here in this room will be impacted directly or indirectly from domestic abuse. So, I ask all of you to join us this month and every month of the year, bringing awareness, sharing information. Our hotline for those of you that may need it or know somebody that needs it is 1-847-249-4450. We're available 24/7. And we just want you to look at our website, go on to our social media, share posts. You don't know who is suffering from domestic abuse all the time, and if you share it and know that information, you will be able to save lives. So, please join us this month and again every day out of the year to raise awareness and help us stop domestic abuse from happening. You can easily wear purple this month to show your unity against domestic violence. Thank you all for recognizing this and for joining us.
Is there someone here for the Bird City? We need a motion for first. Is it, is it you? Alderman Mosio, second. Alderman Florian. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Next is Resolution 21R70 honoring the life of Frank J. Ferland. Madam Clerk, could you read that resolution?
Resolution 21R70 honoring the life of Frank J. Ferland, whereas Frank J. Ferland was born on October 13th, 1929, in Waukegan, Illinois. And whereas Frank J. Ferland served as an engineer with the United States Navy from 1950 to 1952. Whereas Frank J. Ferland received his Bachelor of Science Civil Engineering from Chicago Technical College in 1953. And whereas Frank J. Ferland served as Vice Chairman at the Bank of Waukegan. And whereas Frank J. Ferland served as Supervisor of Lake County, Illinois from 1969 to 1973. And whereas Frank J. Ferland worked on behalf of the city of Waukegan as city engineer since 1977. And whereas Frank J. Ferland was a member of many professional and civic organizations, including the Council for the Promotion of Professional Employment Practices, Society of America Military Engineers, Central States Water Pollution Control Association, Illinois Professional Engineers Foundation, a founder member, American Water Works Association, Illinois Society of Professional Engineers, National Society Professional Engineers, Eagles, Elks, Gaslight, Swedish Glee Club, and the Waukegan Yacht Club. And whereas Frank J. Ferland left this world on Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, and now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Taylor and members of the city council of Waukegan, Illinois do hereby honor the life and legacy of Frank J. Ferland for his distinguished service and dedication to Waukegan. Be it further resolved that a suitably embossed copy of this resolution, signed by the mayor and city clerk, be presented and read into the public record at the city council meeting on the fourth day of October 2021.
Can I have a first for a motion? Alderman Kirkwood, second. Alderman Mosio. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Resolution passed. Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Mosio, to confirm the appointment of Chris Garland for Public Works Director. No. So, roll call, please. Any questions to the motion? Yes, Alderman Kirkwood and Alderman Mosio. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mosio.
Absolutely.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Absolutely.
Alderman Newsom.
Absolutely.
Alderman Turner.
Absolutely.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Okay.
Your Honor.
Your Honor.
Come on up, Mr. Garland.
Your Honor?
Yes. Alderman Kirkwood?
Why, Chris comes up. I've known Chris ever since he was probably 12 years old. One of my brothers too. Mike? There he goes. So, I've known him most of his life. Outstanding young man, you know, worked for several jobs at one time. Comes from a good family, has a good wife to support him. We need to continue to hire people from the city, within the city, who came through our school system and know that they can do the job. We need to continue to do that, and when I heard his name come up, I said, "We got it right for once. We got it right." So, we need to continue to do that, because everything on the South Side of Waukegan is not bad. Okay, so let's keep that in mind. We need to build it up like we build the rest of the city up. So, congratulations, Chris, the job well done.
Your Honor. Your Honor. Your Honor, a few words, if I may? I haven't known Chris as long as Alderman Kirkwood, but when I was a young teacher in 1990, starting out coaching football, let me tell you about this guy. Let me tell you about this guy. This guy undoubtedly is one of the toughest players I ever had the privilege to coach. There's no question about that. He led on the field. I have no doubt that he will lead at Public Works. He might get a little angry, I mean, we were playing Evanston, and we didn't, we didn't come out on the winning end, but let me tell you, this guy and his teammates, they had them so scared and hit them so hard by the end of the game, they didn't want to come out of the huddle. Now, we screwed it up in other ways, but we didn't screw it up because we weren't tough enough. This guy, this guy is Waukegan tough. I love it when a Waukegan kid is successful and rises to the heights that they rise, and he knows I love him.
You know.
Come on now. He gonna have to lean on you a little bit. That's right.
Mr. Chris Garland, want to raise your hand?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, man, take that mask down so we see who you are. I, Chris A. Garland. I, Chris A. Garland. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution. And the Constitution. Of the state of Illinois. Of the state of Illinois. That I will faithfully discharge. That I will faithfully discharge. The duties of the Office of Public Works Director. The duties of the Office of Public Works Director. For the city of Waukegan. For the city of Waukegan. The vestibule. The vestibule. Yes. Come on, man. You know, I'm your champion, Jesus.
I'm right there with you.
Yes, you are. Yes. Sorry. You know, you bulldog straw.
Damn right.
Now you look, now you'll be tough.
I just want to say that staff meetings probably got a lot more interesting now that we have an official couple on in the staff. We're so proud of this couple.
Thank you, baby. Good job. Thank you, baby.
Thank you very much. Both very committed employees, and we couldn't be more proud of you both. Audience time. Again, I want to remind people of the decorum on both sides, from the audience and from up here. Let's respect each other and treat each other nicely. Okay, you have three minutes. First up will be Mr. Ray Vukovic.
Before I start, I'd like to thank you for honoring Frank Ferland. What an institution. I've had the pleasure of knowing him for almost 40 years, and back this summer, I went and saw him as he moved into Victory Lakes, and he's just, you know, what a wonderful person. He's gonna be missed by everybody. And sadly, we have one other to add to that list. Retired gentleman from the Building Department, Jim Pollan, passed away. His services are this Friday. Let me get started here with my, what I came up here to talk about. As many of you know, I've worked with Potawatomi, and the Potawatomi are still very much interested in partnering, partnering with Waukegan to bring a casino to the city. Last month, Johnson Consulting made a presentation to you of the economic and fiscal impact analysis of a proposed casino for Waukegan. I ask each of you to go back and reread that report carefully. Please pay close attention to page one, figure one, baseline assumptions, casino only. While no names were mentioned on the attachment, it is very clear when comparing that report to Mr. Johnson's report from October 2nd, 2019, who is who in that report? A, they were just listed, A, B, C, and D. A would be Rivers, B is Full House, C is North Point, and D is Potawatomi. A, or Rivers, pulled out last week, and you chose not to send D, Potawatomi, to the gaming board. Now that Rivers has said they don't want to come to Waukegan, you need to go back and compare B, C, and D, because, because according to the Johnson report, D, or Potawatomi, would build the largest casino, have the most gaming devices, create the most jobs, and generate far more revenue than B or C, providing the most tax revenue to the city of Waukegan and the state of Illinois. Potawatomi has reviewed the state gaming law and firmly believes it's not too late for Waukegan to send Potawatomi to the gaming board and let the experts decide what would be best for Waukegan and Illinois. And let's remember that Potawatomi were the original settlers of the city of Waukegan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vukovic. Jeffrey Nasser? I may be saying that wrong.
No, Nasser's correct. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I just, well, I've already been introduced, so yeah, this is my first time here, so good evening. All right, so real quick, yes, I'm Sergeant First Class Jeffrey Nasser. I'm going on my fourth year as instructor over here at the JRTC program in the great city of Waukegan. After 33 years in the Army and all over the United States and Korea and Iraq, you know, I knew when I retired in 17, I wanted to teach JRTC. And so, yeah, you know, I'm very fortunate and very blessed to be where I'm at right now, at the high school here, just in my short time. Met a lot of great people in the community, the love and support that you all have for the program. Some of you all have children, grandchildren, whatever, that have gone through it, you know, so I just really want to say thank you all for that support over the years. But, you know, there's always the flip side of that coin, so I'd still like to ask for your continued support. I'm also the head coach of your nationally-ranked drill team. You know, a couple, one was here, this is one of our members, and then one had to leave, but, you know, it never ceases to amaze me when we're out fundraising, just the support that comes through when we're doing our car washes, whatever the case may be, or tag events at Jewel, you know, and the students, you all know, they were, we train literally year-round, you know, we get maybe a month off in the summertime, but we're fundraising, drilling, competing, so we can, you know, maintain that top five or better, you know. Our season does take us all around the United States, from Missouri to Daytona, Florida, to All Service Nationals, so again, just thank you for your support, hope that you will continue to support the drill team, you know, our fundraising events and things like that. You know, our fundraising events and things like that will be posted on the city website. So if you, if you browse around on there and you see us out and about, please continue that support. But, yeah, I just want to really take a second to introduce myself and say thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Calvin Mathis.
Continuing on with my presentation of us versus them, the righteous versus the unrighteous. And thank you, Mayor Taylor, for being a good sport with the cliche, but I'll take it from here and just to say that the question has been posed to me, why should I care about something that happens on the south side of Waukegan, and I live totally on the other side of town? And, you know, it's a question, and I'll take it, and I'll answer it. Now, first reason being, I just happen to believe in God. I just happen to believe that Jesus Christ is the Son of God and been baptized. Second reason, I just happen to be a black man, a black kid that was murdered. And then the third reason, I'm a human being. And anybody that's a human being should care about another human being, especially when it's somebody's son, somebody's father, somebody's brother. It could happen to anybody, but it shouldn't happen. How does that affect me? And here we are. I was thinking, as I was sitting there, about a scripture in the Bible. I don't know exactly where it is, where it talks about, "The summer has ended and the harvest is in, and still we are not saved." And it talks about, "Is there no bomb in Gilead? Is there no physician there? How then is not the hurt of the daughter of my people not healed?" Because we're hurt as a city. I'm not going to let it pass. I'm, every time until this is something, the right thing is done, I'm going to be here. Because there is no way that one person should be fired. There should be a whole lot of people fired, taking accountability. Leadership requires accountability. Accountability, integrity. There's no accountability for a man, a young man that should not be dead. He should be here. And if we don't do anything or say anything, who's going to be next? And I'm going to be back here next, every week, until this is done right. I know, I know, we got a process we got to go through. I know the routine, but I also know about accountability. And you know it too. Leaders should be accountable. And that, that's about it for now, because I only get three minutes, 180 seconds, and that's fine. But this time next year, I should be done. And maybe we'll be, hold somebody accountable. But thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mathis.
Good evening, man, council. Before I begin, man, I really want to say how proud I am as to what Mr. Moseo said, and he echoed Alderman Kirkwood. Y'all finally got something right. Congratulations to Christopher Garland, somebody I've known my whole life, man. Ain't million Mr. Jimmy, they proud today, so they real proud.
Go ahead, man.
I, I came here today, the last time I was here, September the 7th, there was an incident. And I want to start off by apologizing for my actions, because I know better. And for anybody that don't know that, I want to assure you, I know better. But I want to say this, and I want to say this to everybody that's sitting up here on this council. When you guys decided to put your name in the race, you opened up the door for a lot of things. I was disappointed to get an order of protection that barred me from being in a city council meeting, the courthouse 500 feet, however and whichever way it go. But I'm glad that it's over with. But I want to say to all of you guys, we need a code of ethics and a pledge of ethics that each one of you guys should sign. Because again, when residents come up here, know you guys don't deserve to be attacked, but you guys are the leaders. You set the pace. That's what you do. And I was disgusted and disappointed that on September the 7th, as that meeting continued, nobody addressed that. Got to be mindful, our kids watch these meetings too. They on YouTube. YouTube is their favorite. So I will hope you guys will look into getting a code of ethics. That's something that the city council need. Who holds you guys accountable when you do wrong? Four years is too long sometimes. Sometimes discipline need to be applied right away. So I ask you guys to consider that. And again, congratulations to the city of Waukegan for finally getting something that I can say I'm proud of. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clyde McLemore.
What's wrong with the mic?
Good question.
No money.
Need batteries?
We had two.
Right over my office gate. My time ain't started yet. All right, ready, go. Good evening, council members and mayor. Lately, I've been speaking about some unethical situations which has been going on here in City Hall. Mayor, Chief Bridges, City Attorney Stewart, have I lied on any of my statements? Now, everyone wants to know where the leak is coming from. If you're doing the right thing, you wouldn't have to worry about a leak. Everybody around here talk too much, and if you don't tell me directly, you'll tell someone else who will make sure I get the information. I'm a helluva investigator. Maybe if I, maybe if the mayor kept her big mouth shut, our city would not be facing a $3 million demand. I supported you, mayor. I practically begged you to run for mayor. Stretch, Ray Ray, a few other black people jumped out there for you. Once you got in, you surround yourself with people who are going to be the reason for your downfall. Don't get me wrong, we wanted Sam out. Sam was the reason for his own demise. We all knew we needed someone new. What we didn't know was what you was going to do. But no way did we expect you to allow people in your administration to be the same or worse than Sam. Sam did say to me in the mayor's office, along with another Black Lives Matter board member, "Ain't no nigger got me elected." Mayor, what have you demonstrated that you forgot blacks who supported your campaign? Is Margaret Corresso a part of your administration? Margaret Corresso sent me a letter. And in this letter, she alleges me making false statements. And I text her back, "Is she in here?", and I told her she stepped in the wrong lane. Don't go over, didn't she go over to Stretch's and set up his safety plan when no other business ever had, when no other business in Waukegan ever had to have one? The hell made her expert unless she was told by someone what to do? This is why I FOIA it, to see if she was on payroll. And I do have a FOIA here that states that no other business in Waukegan ever, ever had a safety plan. Mayor, I ask you, why you start this on a black business? After, she asked me for a public apology. Well, Margaret, you are a public disgrace. You are the same Latino woman who beat your own people and telling them that you was attorney and you could get them citizenship. Your ass should be in jail.
McLemore, you can't attack another resident.
I have FOIA all the plans from the Fiesta.
We talked about that already, that you cannot attack another resident.
She's a public figure.
She is not a public figure.
According to her letter, she is a community activist. This is her letter right here.
That's it.
She stopped me, that my time stops.
You had five seconds.
According to her letter, and you read it right here, I am, she's a public figure.
But she's not an elected official.
Because you can be, you can get up.
Mr. Al Rogers.
Wait a minute, my time ain't up? My time ain't up, the mayor stopped me. Yeah, excuse me, stay in your lane, please. Let me finish what I'm doing here. You know, she asked me for a public apology. Okay, well, now I'm through with her. I have FOIA all the plans.
Your time is up now. Time is up now. That was only five seconds.
Oh, I get them next one.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, mayor and council. I've, many of you know me, but I've been a part of this community for over 40 years. Dr. Kirkwood, we ride and die together, and many others. I mean, so I said that to say, I came as a member of Black Lives Matter. And the letter that we received, and some of the, and mayor, I spoke to you, you know, prior, you know, to the meeting. So my intent is, I think, to put people on notice that Black Lives Matter is not Clyde. He is a member, but we don't want to throw that net out there, because when we throw that net out there, he barks, I bite. And I don't want it, because what I'm hearing, that you want to run someone against this person and want someone, mayor, I'm speaking to you directly. Whether it's real or not, that we're playing politics on the backs of our citizens. And I won't accept that. I won't accept it. You know, you did agree to meet with me personally, but I wanted to publicly say, you know, we can't pay, play politics on the, because our kids, I spent 40 years, 30 years in the public schools here. So when I saw that young man, that's why I got up and hugged him. Can't play politics on the backs of our residents. Our kids are too important, our families are too important, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers.
Brother Blanks, Black Abolition Movement for the Mind. First, foremost, congratulations to, are in order to, Mr. Garland and those, many of the new officials and employees for tonight. In particularly, I want to congratulate those of the public works in the engineering department, because it's counter relevant to my comments tonight. As we know, and I'm here tonight as a reminder that, just like North Avenue on the north side is a main avenue of the city, and like Glen Flora is a main avenue of the city, and like Lewis Avenue is a main avenue of the city, McAllister Avenue is a main avenue of this city. Yet, out of all the avenues I have mentioned, McAllister Avenue has been one of the most underserved. Each of these avenues that I just mentioned, I'm here tonight as a reminder that it's time, as a city, that McAllister Avenue get the attention that it deserved. McAllister Avenue, when many people come back to visit this city, residents who has lived here, that's an avenue that many come down as a tourist attraction through the south side. We cannot no longer neglect Avenue, McAllister Avenue. So I'm here to put it on you all minds and attention. We have a new public work director, we got a new engineer. Let's make this happen for McAllister Avenue and every citizen that live on the south side, and every citizen of the city of Waukegan. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Brother Blanks. The last speaker tonight will be me.
Anybody, anybody can talk.
Ready, David? All right. The intent of this report is to update the alderman following my recent press release announcing the need to cut back the city clerk public access hours from 45 hours to 35 hours a week, to supply details of the impact of reducing the clerk staffing from four to two, and the four-month-long chronology of attempts to ward off the current crisis by hiring temp employees to backfill. The mayor's reason for not allowing me on the agenda is because she controls the agenda and that this report does not meet her requirement for inclusion. However, I was allowed to add an agenda item and address the council as recently as July 19th without her objection, which serves as a precedent. I cannot withhold this report in good conscience for another month to meet her requirements as the impact of the staffing crisis in the clerk's office grows daily. This remark will be given to all the aldermen tonight, along with a copy of these remarks. Please understand that two resources remaining, the clerk and deputy clerk, are not absent during those 10 hours, but are working behind the scenes, trying to keep the office afloat as the reduction of resources has caused a 60-hour-a-week shortfall in resources to address our mandated, our mandated duties. A shortfall, both foreseeable and entirely avoidable. We need at least three members of an experienced staff, with one member bilingual, that can assist our residents and do our job. As a first department encountered as residents enter City Hall, the two of us spend the majority of public access hours greeting residents, directing traffic, and answering questions, further reducing the time we have for mandated duties. Currently, my Spanish-speaking employee is number zero, as one experienced, experienced admin was abruptly transferred to another department in July, and the other is out on FMLA. The city's administration's failure to avert and take serious the clerk's office impending staffing crisis over a four-month period may be a reflection of the administration's inexperience and situational incompetence by failing to recognize the serious consequences of a prolonged delay in addressing an internal staffing issue and the time required to vet temporary resources, thus allowing the situation to become a matter of public concern and negatively impacting and the timely execution of mandated duties and customer service. Or the failure to act may be politically motivated attempt by the mayor's administration to isolate, diminish, handicap, and damage the reputation of the clerk's office by denying and delaying the required resources in defiance, in defiance of the will of Waukegan voters who made their choice that a team of elected municipal officials of diverse party affiliations would best serve the city. Regardless of the motivation, the completely avoidable crisis is upon us and requires the alderman's attention, import, and support for resolution. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that concludes audience time.
And now out of here on a personal mission.
On to the consent agenda. Motion, can I have a first?
Don't move.
Alderman Turner, second, Alderman Moseo.
Mayor? Woo-hoo, down here. I'd like to have item F pulled out, please.
Item F, okay. Any other questions to the motion? Item A, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Tuesday, September 7th, 2021. Item B, motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from Monday, September 20th, 2021. Item C, motion to approve the regular payroll dated September 24th, 2021, in a total amount Item D, motion to approve vendor payments dated October 4th, 2021, in a total amount of $746,386.34. Item E, motion to approve miscellaneous payback, or payroll, PBLC, holiday buyback, comp time, cash out. PBLC, holiday buyback, comp time cash out, final payout, ERI, final payouts, dated September twenty-fourth, 2021 in a total amount of sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, question to item F.
At the risk of irritating Alderman Moiseo, which I have done numerous times, I know he thinks raffles are an overreach of government meddling, and I tend to agree, but since we're approving these, I think... I don't know, I just wanted to ask a question about two of them. So, the aggregate amount is the total amount of the prizes, is it not? On the, on the form they fill out, it'll say the aggregate amount of, of the raffle.
Yes.
And then each prize, the maximum amount is listed. Well, on two of them, the aggregate value is less than each prize. That's impossible, isn't it? Like, isn't the aggregate the total amount that they're going to give away?
Right.
So how can we approve these if they weren't even filled out correctly? Not that I don't want to approve them, I, you know, it's just a raffle. They're both great causes, it's Waukegan to College and the, I forget what the other one was, it's listed as AMP on here. It's not that I don't want to approve them, but I just think we, we need to have a little bit more oversight over how these are filled out and make sure they're filled out correctly before they're presented to us.
So, I don't have that in front of me, but what you're saying is the prize money is less than what the total amount is in the, in the pot, let's say.
Well, right, yeah, the aggregate is listed as twenty dollars for one and each prize is two hundred. Well, how can the aggregate be twenty if each prize is two hundred? And then in the other one, the aggregate value is one fifty and each prize is a thousand. So there's no way it could only be a hundred and fifty if they're giving away a thousand with each prize. Unless I'm reading this wrong, I'm assuming...
Can you identify which ones are the ones of concern?
Ones for Waukegan to College and the other one, I, I don't have the exact thing in front of me, but it was listed as AMP. I'm trying to, A.M. as in Mary P. It was the last, there was like four of them listed, I think, it was the last two.
Yeah, it appears, I, I see what you're saying, that it does appear that there was, um, some confusion probably on the part of this. And I think that we can, we, we can have the staff that looks at these, um, which is the licensing department.
Just call them and ask them, maybe they made a mistake on their figures. This is like, huh.
Why don't we just do the corrections?
Total over guard, I, I get you, Alderman Florian, I get it, but I highly doubt Waukegan to College is cheating anybody.
I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to suggest they're cheating anybody by any stretch of the imagination.
I know, I know that, but-
I'm saying the form wasn't filled out correctly, and if we're going to approve them, they should be correct. I, I'm, I'm not trying to be picky uni, but it, it's wrong.
What we can do is, we can, we can note these two, and you, we can do a conditional approval of them based on a corrected form-
Okay, that would be great.
-accepted by the licensing department.
I don't want to hold them up in any way, I just want to make sure that the form gets corrected.
It was the AMP and the Waukegan to College matter?
Yes.
Okay, we will check with the licensing department on that and have them reach out to the applicants to-
Thank you very much.
-more completely, uh, fill out their issues.
So the motion is to approve on a conditional-
Conditionally approved.
Yeah. Okay, motion to conditionally approve, can I have a motion for that, um, a first?
I'll second.
Alderman Newsom, second, Alderman Rivera. Uh, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Thank you, there being no reports or communications, old business, on to new business. Item A, can I have a motion? Item A. Alderman Newsom, second.
Alderman Turner.
Alderman Turner. Motion to adopt Resolution 2021 R. A resolution to approve a benefit protection leave for an employee within the Public Works Department participating in the Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund. Any questions to the motion, I think this came up in executive council. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, ma'am.
Thank you. Can I have a first for item B?
And I'll second.
Alderman Hayes and Alderman Rivera. A motion to adopt Resolution 2021 R. A resolution ratifying the extension of the collective bargaining agreement made between the International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150 Public Employees Division representing the Public Works Supervisor employees and the City of Waukegan to be effective on May first, 2021, and to be terminated on April thirtieth, 2022.
Motion? Motion, ma'am?
I'm just going to try to yell this out, can everybody hear me? Can I help? Okay, so, any questions to item B? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Item C, can I have a first?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Hayes. A motion to adopt Resolution 2021 R. A resolution ratifying an extension of the collective bargaining agreement made between International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 150 Public Employees Division representing the Public Works Non-Supervisor and Police Auxiliary Employees of the City of Waukegan to be effective on May first, 2021, to be terminated on April thirtieth, 2022.
Another question.
Yes.
What is the police auxiliary employee, what is? What is that, chief? Is the chief here?
Uh, no, but, um, Tamika's here, our HR.
What is the police auxiliary employees, who are that? Who, who? Oh, got it, thank you so much. Parking, alright, got it. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Item D.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself for this.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself as well, as, uh, one of the principals of the court.
Can I have a motion? Wait. A motion, um... Alderman Turner, you have to leave the room.
You have to leave the room?
Just go stand out in the hallway for a minute. Okay, uh, motion, Alderman Florian, second, Alderman Moiseo. A motion to approve the ordinance creating a Class A liquor license for Mega Force Reggae Lounge, 3447 Sunset Avenue. This matter was heard by the Committee Development Committee after September twentieth, twenty-one special committee meeting. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Newsom.
No.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can, can you... Can somebody get Alderman Turner for me, thank you. Item E. Can I have a first? Alderman Kirkwood, a second. Alderman Hayes. A motion to approve a resolution ratifying an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Department of Transportation for traffic signal maintenance and energy costs. Any questions to the motion? Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes. Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Can I have a motion for item F?
Oh.
Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman Rivera. A motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract to P&amp;H Sineska Inc. for the water plant sledge, de-watering, and disposal bid for a not-to-exceed amount of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, and a hundred and thirty-six, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three. Funds to be charged to the line item 556-916-027018. Any questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Alderman Hayes.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager. Alderman Moiseo. Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Motion passed, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. There being no ordinances, um, closing items, Alderman time.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you Deputy Clerk Patterson for that. I'd like to, I know we're running late, I have a few things I'd like to say, though. I would like to thank all the people who spoke during audience time. I know it's not always easy, especially if you've never done it before. We had some people speaking at the committee meetings earlier that had never been up here to speak, and I just appreciate the people that take the time to, to do that and let us know what, what's on their mind and what they want us to hear. Couple things. I had a resident reach out to me, she was replacing her driveway, and she wanted to also do the approach, you know, between the sidewalk and the street, you know, just to make it look nice, even though we technically own the approach as a city. And it was going to be, I think, six hundred extra dollars for her to do that part. And, um, and then she had to pay, of course, a permit fee for the whole project. And her suggestion was, and I promised her I would bring it to all of you, was that because she's replacing that approach at her expense, which is actually our property that she's doing that, maybe when someone gets a driveway permit fee, you know, we, or gets charged a permit fee, we could give them a little bit of a break on the permit fee if they're doing the approach also, because it, it helps beautify the city, it's, it's our property. It may be something just to think about. She, she was a little annoyed that, you know, she was paying this extra six hundred for the approach, and then she also still had to pay the full permit fee. So, I promised her I would talk to all of you about it, and so, I kept my promise. So I'd just like, I'd like to hear feedback from all of you about what you think about that. I wanted to, um, also state, we recently were asked by the Chief of Staff to make our suggestions for changes in the ordinances. And I would like to say that I think we need to always make a consideration of the environment in all of the ordinances that we change, pass, whatever, up here. I realize, you know, the city needs to provide vital services, police, fire, public works, water, all of those things, but not at the expense of human rights, environmental standards, or community. I believe we are in a, a crisis in this country environmentally, and I think Waukegan stands in a position to potentially be... I don't know in my lifetime, maybe in Alderman Hayes, he's much younger than I am, but I think Waukegan poses, you know, can be a great place for people to live someday because we have access to fresh water. Think about how many places in this country don't have access to water. Las Vegas comes to mind, Phoenix comes to mind, LA comes to mind. I mean, look at California, the whole freaking state's on fire because they don't have enough water. So, anyway, I think we are, we as a corporate, you know, citizen council, city council, we are charged with, with planning, not just for today, but for the future. And I think we always need to make sure that we keep this in mind when we, when we look at ordinances and, and everyday occurrences within the city. We're especially taxed with this ETO problem. And I know, I, I've received an email, and I think almost all of the people on the city council, we're getting pressure to, um, bring attention to the state and federal levels about the ETO in Waukegan and how we may have not been fully informed about what the exact situation was here in Waukegan. And I encourage the mayor and, and the, the city staff to take that request seriously, because I believe ETO is a, a very dangerous thing. We've, we've talked about it up here, and before I became a city, uh, an Alderman, there was, um, testing that was approved and paid for on ETO, so I just think it's something we need to take seriously. And then, it's, it's interesting, Mr. Edwards mentioned an ethics statement. I actually printed one out today that is from the International City Management Association. And there's twelve, I won't read them all on here, but it's a code of ethics. And I, I spoke with the city attorney, and he said that we do have a code of ethics within our city ordinance, but maybe we need to look at updating that and actually making it something we sign. And that, last but not least, I have a dumpster on Thursday, October twenty-eighth, for the Eighth Ward at Fireman's Park, which is at twenty-one fifteen Dover, kind of right behind the Ace Hardware in that neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alderman Florian. Alderman Hayes.
Thank you. Okay, so a couple of points, I've talked to a number of residents recently that have just asked point blank, what can I do, like, how can I help, what can I do? My response has been the same. Show up, come to city council meetings, take your three minutes. It's actually a pretty good amount of time if you have your, your thoughts organized and you, the points that you want to make. So I have encouraged everybody to come here, whether they disagree with us, whether they agree with us, whether it's to thank us, whether it's to call us out. Come, utilize your opportunity as a citizen of Waukegan to ask questions, ask hard questions. I promise you, we are listening and we are talking about it behind, behind the scenes. It is being considered by staff and all of the Aldermen take it very seriously. I too had a resident reach out to me about ETO. That was my message, come to the city council meeting, help educate us. We're doing our homework, but we need to hear from you, just like we heard from the residents tonight about the proposal for the parking lot. I think that, you know, we can sit here and talk all night, but when you have the residents, the people who are being impacted by the decisions, we may come here and speak to us. It, it, it speaks volumes, and it goes farther than you can possibly imagine. It is really, really critical. So, at the risk of upsetting everybody, we will sit here all night and listen to your comments. So, please, please show up. And finally, I'd just like to thank any, everybody tonight for having a healthy debate, listening to what the residents had to say, listening to what I had to say, long-winded at times, and, and having your responses. I, I think that's how this works. We talk to each other, we have a mutual respect for each other, we're able to hold the dialogue, and however the decision shakes out, that's how it shakes out. But I just wanted to thank you guys. It's my first opportunity to sit up here and take a very hard position on something and receive feedback from everybody on the city council, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Alderman Hayes. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I am so glad to hear from some constituents in my ward other than just me talking about improvement within the First Ward. So I really want to thank you for letting me not feel like I'm all alone in dressing, especially such places, McAllister. And I really thank you all for, um, our departments, Mike Patel and Planton and John, those that came together to get that burnt house down. It seemed like it just took forever and ever. So, and of course, now we have a burnt garage. And roosters! Roosters, but anyway, that is to yet be addressed, that's just on the comical side. But, so I want to thank you. And so with that said, also, I want to thank the constituents of the First Ward that get together in these different areas of the First Ward, and they're cleaning the neighborhood, they're taking action, being proactive, not just depending- they're taking action, being proactive, not just depending on us as city officials of the city, but coming together and cleaning up the alleys of the 1st Ward. And anybody want to come together and do that? The number is 224-607-8445. I feel like I'm doing a commercial, 224-607-8445. Now, when it comes to the 1st Ward also, if you come off the Amstead and hit Genesee going south, you see the Barwell Community. It is beautiful. 120 units that they're working on. And I'm gonna tell you, the housing, Barwell Housing Authority and the outside contractors is making a great improvement, you know, just drive by. So, we are working down here in the 1st Ward. I'm not just sitting on my hide, I am out there, I am on the streets. It's hard to be every place at one time for everything and everybody, however, I am out there. And I want to congratulate Mike Hewitt on his retirement. He was just, he's such a man of hard-working spirit and such a pleasant disposition, and I just pray we can duplicate him, because he is just awesome. And then lastly, I want to announce, I'm going to be working on another ward meeting. I heard some complaints that you all didn't want to come here, you want me to bring the meeting to you. So, I am in the process of working and knowing, figure out how to navigate that. Thank you again.
Thank you Alderman Bolton. Alderman Seager?
Good evening, everyone. I'm proud to say that this is the first time ever Alderman Kirkwood and myself are having a ward meeting, Ward 2 and 4, back-to-back, October 11th, Park Place. 5:30 to 7, right there? 5:30 to 7 o'clock at night. We welcome anyone in 2nd, 4th Ward, or any other ward. Come on down. We'll be there to answer your questions, have something to eat and fresh drinks. And I'd like to wish my condolences to the Furlan family. Frank was quite a man. And he won't ever be replaced, believe me. Also, I'd like to thank Mike Hewitt, all the members of Public Works, for all their hard work and devotion to the city of Waukegan. Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you Alderman Seager. Alderman Moisio?
Yeah, Alderman Florian, you don't irritate me, the whole raffle thing irritates me, that the state of Illinois would throw it in our lap. If there's corruption, or somebody's cheating somebody, that's an IRS and a state's attorney's problem, not our staff and our police department to be worrying about.
I was not insinuating anybody was doing anything corrupt at all, ever.
I think the fact that the state did that was because maybe there's been some corruption somewhere in the state, so they threw it in local municipalities, laughed and said, hey, you guys deal with it, when it's, to me, it's just overgovernance. I wasn't saying you were insinuating, and you were not irritating me, I'm just irritated that it's even on our plate, it shouldn't be. With that being said, there's been some talk about clean air, clean water. Again, I said at last council meeting, we gotta talk about safe streets. It's all public safety. It's all public safety in my mind. Clean air, clean water, and safe streets, it's all public safety. That is our job one. The job one of government is public safety, above all else, it's public safety, keep the citizenry safe. So, we need to get everybody involved in all three of those aspects, in my mind. Now, I know the safe streets, that's a little bit more difficult than clean air and clean water, in some ways. So, but we need everybody involved in that. What good is a new road? Is Alderman Bukovich years ago, said, what good is a new street when you can't go out there if you fear for your life?
No, that's right.
So, we have got, and this is not just a Waukegan problem, this has become a societal problem. And I've seen it, being in a high school for 31 years, I have seen the, for lack of a better word, the slow transition of young people who can't deal with conflict. I've seen it. We need to come together and get this, get this at least under control, or make it at least better. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Moisio. Alderman Kirkwood?
Thank you Deputy Clerk. I have several items, but first and foremost, my condolences go to the Frank Furlan family and our other past city workers' family. But more importantly, I think that we need to recognize that the retirement of Mike Hewitt is a great loss to the city, and certainly we have someone that can begin to fill his shoes in Chris Garland. But what I ask the mayor and the rest of the council is that I believe that we need to make sure that Chris is successful, and I'm asking the council and the mayor to look at bringing Mike Hewitt back for 10 hours a week to mentor Chris and the other people that are in the Public Works area. Also, in Public Works, you know that we're going to have a winter, and we need to make sure that our new staff is ready, no matter what goes on. I went around the 4th Ward today, and I counted 40 areas that brush has still not been picked up. It's not from the storm, people are putting things out. So, my question comes, is all our trucks running in the Public Works area? If they're not, we need to get the parts and get them repaired, because I don't see those trucks running like they were running earlier. So, I'd like to get an answer to that. How many trucks are on the road picking up brush? Do we have the personnel hired to make sure that it gets done? Because leaf pickup is coming, and we need to make sure all the brush is off the parkways and off the curbing. So, we need to make sure we look at that. Also, when it comes to ethics, I think each of us should learn to govern ourselves. You know, we selected to run for this office, and we need to make sure that we have broad shoulders, we can take the hits, and keep on moving. I think that's important. Certainly, we can look at, you know, the ordinance and see if it needs some adjustment, but the best thing to do is that we govern ourselves. Do I like everything I hear? No, but I'm not going to react to it. Also, piggybacking on what Alderman Seager said, the 2nd and 4th Ward is going to have a joint meeting at the Belvedere Rec Center on next Monday. It starts at 5:30. There will be food, not just refreshments, we're going to have some nice food, so it's not going to be just pick food, you're going to be fed well. Also, our mayor will be there. Also, all the departments will be represented there, the fire department, the police department, planting and zoning, all the departments will be recognized there, so if you've got questions, please make sure that you give those questions to Alderman Seager or myself. Also, don't forget that this coming Saturday, All-in-One Waste Event is probably one of the first times we have so many different city and public entities working together. So, all your electronics you want to get rid of, outdated prescriptions, documents that you need to have shredded from 8:30, 11:30, at 25 South, Martin Luther King, please be there. Also, we want to make sure that, I've been looking at in the 4th Ward, all the vacant homes and businesses. I've been working with the staff in terms of, how do we make sure we got a list? I don't know if the other Aldermen have looked there, but some are not registered, some are registered, homes are vacant, those families that live next door to them, they know that animals are getting into the roofs and things of that nature, young people are going in those. We need to get that list together, as I picked up the list from Ms. Alexander, and then I filled it in and told her I would get it back to her, so we know exactly where are vacant homes in that area, because those are the things that tend to have problems in those homes, when people know that no one lives there. Alderman Moisio talked about safe streets. We're not going to have safe streets until all of our residents feel that they're responsible also. That means if you see something, you say something. Neighborhood watch programs don't work if you don't report things. Also, we don't have enough police officers to do the job. I said this before, we need 184 police officers, and still, that may not be enough. We need to make sure that it doesn't take 40 minutes, 50 minutes, and Chief said not too long ago, how many we really have rolling daytime and nighttime. So, we need to look at where we can get the dollars, and also get the people who need academy, and once again, we need to try to get young people who are from Waukegan, who know residents, and have been through things, and haven't, you know, caught a case, because that's usually what stops us, in terms of trying to be police officers, as well as, you know, firefighters. Also, it's important that in the event of something happening in your neighborhood, shootings, I had an incident a couple weeks ago, several residents from the area where I live came to my door Sunday afternoon, on my yard, 17 to 20 strong, what you going to do? And I raised a question to them. I never see you at a ward meeting, I never see you at city council, it's your neighbor as well as mine, let's go down there. They didn't go down there, but they came to my house, and I said, okay, come to city council. Out of those 17, I think three or four came. So, we gotta take responsibility for our own neighborhoods. Also, in closing, we still walk around like there's no coronavirus, you know? People get offended when you got a mask on, you know? I don't know how old some of you are, but some of you, I know that I knew you when you were 13 and 14 years old. I want to live as long as God intends me to live, and I don't want to compromise that because you decide not to wear your mask, okay? I'm not going to ask you if you're vaccinated or not, I'm vaccinated, and I can prove that, but my concern is that we need to follow the CDC guidelines. And in ending, it's important that we get vaccinated. If you've gotten two of them, get three of them. Thank you Deputy Clerk.
Thank you Alderman Kirkwood. Alderman Newsom?
Thank you Deputy Clerk. First of all, I would like to thank YCC, Youth Bill, they were out in the 5th Ward last Friday, cleaning up overgrown debris, I mean, overgrown brush, removing debris, tires, et cetera, and removed some graffiti. So, I would like to thank Mr. Bill and Ms. Karen from YCC, and also Mr. Eddie and Mr. Dante from the Public Works Department that stayed with the crew to kind of supervise them in the alleys, and let them know what was private property, and then what was, you know, good to be removed. So, they did an awesome job in the 5th Ward and the alleys, and I'd like to thank Alderman Kirkwood for helping me get that set up. Next, I would like to thank Mr. Hewitt for his many years of dedication to the citizens of Waukegan, or the residents of Waukegan, I believe it was 46 years, and for his care that he took with the 5th Ward. I would call him constantly, sometimes every day, and he would say, you must be out riding in the ward. I'd say, yeah, I'm out. So, Mr. Chris, I got your number. So, I'll be calling you, let you know when I see things that need to be taken care of. And I do believe that you will be successful, because we all up here want you to be successful, and we're going to make sure that you do, and that you will fulfill your purpose and your plan. It was not just by coincidence that you get this position. You've served many years over there at Public Works, so I have no doubt that you're able to fulfill this assignment as the Director of Public Works, and congratulations again. And to Mr. Arturo, I'm not sure if he's still here, the supervisor, congratulations to him and our new city engineer, Mr. Jesus, I don't want to mess up your last name, so congratulations to you. Also, condolences to the Furlan family. I've known Frank probably since I've been an Alderman, probably about 18 years. He not only worked in Waukegan, I believe he did sometime in North Chicago as well, and he could tell you what was under every infrastructure. When you had a question about anything, he could tell you, well, they did this back in 1950, this, and 60 that, you know, and what size the pipes were, and what's under this road. So, we really lost a wealth of knowledge when he passed away, but I hope we were able to get some of that information from him, that will continue to help us in the city of Waukegan. Also, my next Operation Clean Sweep is going to be Tuesday, October 19th. I'll have a dumpster at the corner of Yeoman Street and Grand Avenue. It's going to be Tuesday, 8:30 a.m. to 3 o'clock p.m. If you have any questions, don't hesitate to give me a call, 847-494-4190. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner?
Thank you Deputy Clerk Patterson. So, a few things here in the 6th Ward. First, I too want to congratulate Chris Garner and Art Torres Jesús Alcazara, all right, Richard Dent, Ron Ardella, and I do want to again congratulate my good friend Sylvia England as well, on the African-American museum, and what she's doing over there, it's been a long time's dream of hers. In the 6th Ward, got a couple of things coming up. The mayor mentioned earlier, I'm going to do a, my ward meeting for Q3 is going to be Thursday evening, October 14th, at 6:30 p.m. That's going to be a Zoom meeting, so if you're not on my email list, I encourage you to get there, and just send me an email or a text with your email, 847-445-3788. I'll put this one out on social media again, but I'm going to be moving more towards more personal and direct connection through emails and texts, so please get on my list. Recently, there's a scam artist, this is a con man, he's been operating in the 6th Ward, 7th Ward, over in the 5th Ward, and he's been, he's been around for at least three years, maybe more, and he period, he comes around about this time of year, right, in the fall, and his pitch is, his pitch is that he comes to the door, and he says, hey, I'm collecting money for a shoe and coat drive at Bowen Park, right? Now, the guy comes with a folder, it's a little blue folder, and he manages to show it to you so that you can see the list of names, and they're all, you know, maybe you might recognize them, but, and he says, hey, I live right over on Hickory Street, or over in Longview, and I talked to your neighbor. And anyway, he's scamming people out of money, he's been doing it for years, and he's, I mean, this dude is smooth, he is a con artist. How do I know that? Because I caught him. So, to make a long story short, he targets elderly, and particularly elderly females, and he had targeted an 85-year-old woman in my neighborhood. She called me, I sat up and did surveillance on her house, for a period of time I didn't see him, but some other neighbors, a few days later, did see him, he came to their door, they identified, they called me, I was able to find the guy, I followed him, and he again had an elderly woman at her door scamming her money, and I got him on video, kind of chased him away, called the police, and they got him, and they interviewed him. So, we know who he is, and we've discouraged him from repeating. But if you see this guy in the 6th Ward again, don't engage him, don't give him any money, call the police immediately, and then call me. His name, he goes by, he identifies himself as Paul, but his real name is Harold, and his middle name is Paul. He's about 5'7", Caucasian, in his 40s, maybe early 50s, very well dressed, very well spoken, but don't engage with Paul. We also be, I'm getting numerous reports in the 6th Ward about illegal car repair operations in residential areas, people fixing cars in their garage. operations in residential areas, people fixing cars in their garage. I have vehicles and motorcycles, I work on them too, but I don't do a commercial business, and you can't either. So if you are aware of a neighbor who is commercializing their car repair business in their garage, you can call the building and/or code compliance officer directly. You can call the building department. And certainly, as always, call me about anything. Please let me know, and I'll have code compliance get involved and investigate. On Halloween, finally on the holiday, October 31st, there's going to be a Halloween block party between, on Greenwood, between Walnut and Jackson Street. This is several vendor, or merchants up there that are putting this together. It's going to be huge. It's going to be big. So I encourage you, visit the Halloween block party in sixth ward up on, and that's going to be from 2:00 to 5:00 on Halloween evening, or Halloween afternoon. Okay? That's that one. And, all right, so last but not least, last meeting, I mentioned that, you know, every year I do my annual sixth ward rewards program, where I put up my money, and I offer an incentive to help identify criminal activities in the sixth ward, right? And I offer a cash reward for that. And in the 12 years I've done, I've only paid one reward. So, but we get a lot of good information. So last meeting, I mentioned that, that reward program only runs between Memorial Day and Labor Day. So it was ending. It had ended, and I thought, maybe I should do this thing all year long. But I think what I want to do is a more targeted offer. Last week, I got my phone, and I just counted the number of emails that I received from the police department, significant incidents that the words "shots fired" were mentioned. That's not including aggravated battery, unlawful use of a weapon, anything like that. Only the words "shot fired." And I, at that time, at that point, the count between July 1st and September, whatever it was, was 48 calls, right? So I want to, I want to do something to encourage people to report the possession of an illegal gun, right? If you report to the police department that someone is in possession of an illegal gun, or illegally in possession of a gun, that could be a prohibited person, a felon, a teenager, whomever, I'm going to get, and you give information that leads to an arrest and a conviction, I'll pay you $2,500. And if you provide information that leads to the arrest and conviction of someone who fires a gun, other than in self-defense, if they shoot it in the air, they shoot it at a tree, they shoot a car or a house, or heaven forbid, they shoot somebody, if you can help get an arrest and a conviction, I'll give you $5,000. We have got to step up and do something. This, these shots fired calls are getting out of control. They've gotten, they've been out of control. And we need to do something. So I'm doing my part. I can't be everywhere. I can't talk to everyone. But if you can bring information to the police department that leads to an arrest and conviction, you can get a report number, or work with the police, and identify yourself to them. You can't do it, I don't know how you can do it anonymously, but if you want the money, then I got to know you did it, right? You got to let me know somehow. All right? So that's what I have. I wish you all a good night. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you.
Join the email list, come to the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Deputy Kirk. I just want to, first of all, thank all the audience participants for their time and for their comments. I sincerely appreciate them. My condolences to...
Please, excuse me, let me just interrupt. I'm sorry, folks, and excuse me. I want to make sure you understand that that reward offer is not just for the sixth ward, that's citywide, okay? So in norm, my sixth ward rewards program is for the ward. I'm telling you now, this rewards program is citywide. Thank you, and excuse me.
Okay. I think I'll be on patrol after this meeting. But, no, seriously though, condolences to the Furlan family, and also, all the families, the Waukegan families who have lost a loved one. It is a hardship. And I guess my last comment is, addressing the clerk's comments this evening, and I would probably suggest, if we could take a look at doing some sort of a staffing assessment, and verifying, you know, the functions that are completed within our clerk's office, and just verifying that we're adequately staffed there. And that's all I have, folks. Good night, and God bless.
Madam Mayor, that concludes Alderman's time.
I just want to add one other quick thing, is, some of you are already talking about roads being done. One of the things that we are looking at right now is, many of you have heard about the lead pipe replacement that is part of the infrastructure bill. Lead pipes are going to be redone in all communities. In Waukegan, that involves over 26,000 homes, at a cost of $25-plus thousand per household. And if you include engineering in that, you can add another $3,000 per household. So, before we start doing roads and tearing roads up, as we replace lead pipes, as we've just come off paying $58 million in bond money for roads that will eventually now be torn up, it's time for us to do a detailed assessment with our new engineer. And we will need to look at extending or expanding our engineering department to accommodate this. This is a cost that is being put on all municipalities. We don't know exactly how much money will be given, because as you know, the bill has not been passed. Illinois has the eighth greatest amount of lead pipes. Will we get an eighth of the money? Probably not. So I am currently looking at creative ways of how I can get help. And some of that is through grants, obviously, through our legislators, but everybody's going to be asking that route. I am looking at other options. And like I said, as we unroll that plan, we will then look at doing the roads, so that the taxpayers are not paying everything twice. So that is currently where we're at, and our poor engineers fairly on board, and we're, and our new Public Works Director, and we're right in there. But we are in the middle of that process, and we will have a plan, and we are working hard on that plan currently. So I just wanted to update you on that. I think it's a shock for many people to find out how expensive that is, but it is a mandate. So we don't have a choice. We have to do this. So, on that note, have a good night, everybody, and thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
I'm sorry, I'm getting a motion to adjourn.
A motion?
Alderman Turner and Alderman Bolton will be, all those in favor.